Okay, now in our last, um, town hall, the first one, we had the school. Uh, unfortunately, uh, I think Moi isn't here, but anyway, Moi, uh, if you have questions about the school, you can ask during our Q and A. I can answer that. Han is here, um, you know, he can answer as well. So if you have something about the school, and I'll also say something about that in my presentation of the vision, mission, and the goals, uh, you know, for our parish. And, uh, I'd like to give Ed, uh, Ed is our chairperson for the finance council. As you know, uh, we have two councils now. Uh, of course, through the years, finance council at that time slash, you know, pastor council. But one of the things that they did for us, you know, as part of the enhancement, is to have a pastoral council. And in the next few weeks, I'm gonna present the two couns- uh, councils to all of you. We're gonna give them special blessings. But, uh, anyway, Ed has, uh, has been working so hard for the last fifteen years, and he's the chair of our finance council. Okay? Take it away, Ed.
Uh, my name is Ed Holschwander. You've probably seen me give some, uh, presentations, uh, updates throughout the years. Uh, again, it's been fifteen or eighteen years. I got an email the other day. I've been doing this a long time. Um, I wanna talk a little bit, let's go back to the first slide before we get to here. Okay, so I'm gonna talk a little bit about the capital campaign, which I am not the expert on. Kevin Fisher, who, um, many of you know, has been intimately involved in many of the projects at St. Perpetra for the last twenty years. Uh, and was intimate, particularly, uh, the creation of this facility. Um, but I will, I will use some information with him. I'll be able to answer as many questions as I can, but, uh, I will fill in for him on that. And then, uh, just give you a parish update in terms of what, and this is what primarily the finance council spends a lot of time on, is more the operations of the or of the parish. Keeping the lights on, being able to, uh, run the ministries, uh, be able to, you know, pay the salaries and the utilities and all those kinds of things. So let me start, next slide. Martha, thank you. Uh, capital campaign, that's in low, that's what we're gonna call it. So I know many of you wanna understand what's going on with this, and why. So let me first start off by showing, uh, the next slide, Martha. Nineteen million dollars of parish and school improvements over the last twenty years. We've done a lot in this facility, both the parish and the school. And it goes back to really, the start of this was in the early two, two thousands, when we added on to the school, which was the first major improvement, uh, back in the twenty, two thousand two, two thousand three. And we kinda have a whole laundry list here, giving you an idea of the order of magnitude and the kinds of things we've done. If you remember, Father John used to come up with the kithy little, uh, phrases of like, "Would there be light?" "If this light happening?" and all those other things. So these are many of the, uh, the, uh, projects that have occurred over the years. And again, it's been almost nineteen million dollars worth of improvements over the last twenty years. The big enchilada, obviously, is this facility. Next slide. So let's go back and look at, uh, how were these projects funded? For the most part, they were funded by a combination of direct appeals and three capital campaigns over this time. Now, when I say direct appeals, this is where Father John would go around and say, "I need new windows," or "I need to new lighting," or whatever. So obviously, we've all been, uh, exposed to that over the years. But there are also three capital campaigns that have been held. Next slide. So I just wanna go back, and that first, very first campaign, which helped with that first addition to the school, was back in twenty, in two thousand and two. And really, this was a designated campaign. I think it was two million dollars total. Specifically, one million was for the school, for their addition. And one million, we kinda put in the bank at the time, within the hopes of doing a new church up in the upper field. So that was, uh, that, uh, happened way back when, uh, I think we actually exceeded the two million dollars. Uh, and, uh, again, that was split between the school and the church. And in two thousand and fifteen, when there was, uh, activity to reduce something, the old, what I call the lean-to, which was, uh, the old hall, which had handled maybe, what, seventy-five people. Um, then there was a campaign in two thousand fifteen, uh, five point five million out of five point six was raised. Again, generally, don't raise all the money that's pledged. Uh, people moved. They were too optimistic about what they could offer. Uh, people died, lots of reasons. Uh, and then as things percolated, where we got to the point where we had this sort of, uh, critical mass of being able to get something done, uh, then we had, uh, the start of the project. And we talked about how the project sort of expanded, meet some of the needs that were expressed at the time, as well as the cost implications. So then, there was a follow-up, uh, capital campaign in two thousand and eighteen. That was both parishioners and also then, where we had some commitments made to fund the size and scope of this. So next slide. So end result is, to get to the size that both the school and the parish, um, wanted to get to, because we could've done something smaller, we ended up being a couple billion dollars short. Father John, uh, Karen Goodshaw, former principal, and then Kevin Fisher, basically worked numbers and figured out how through, basically, I'll say, this, the backing of the school financial condition, which is separate from the parish, could basically, uh, back a loan, and they got that approved at the diocese, which is what then allowed us to actually do this construction. So it was that event that allowed us to get to the size and scope that we had, to accommodate, you know, be able to sit down three hundred people in here. And if you notice, it's like, this looks like it could be a stage someday, right? So we built this with thinking in the future as well. And then, even before we, uh, before COVID, I think we had two hundred and twenty people in here for a, for a crab feet, which we could never put, we had to do that in three shifts in the old, uh, the old hall. So basically, the needs of the school, needs of the parish, ended up being sort of the size and scope of what we've got today. Uh, and again, it was through the, the, the school and their participation, uh, their, uh, in December. So, long story short is, then comes COVID. So we have this two million dollar loan, things kind of, uh, during COVID, there was a lot of concern like how long it would last, what the long-term implications were, et cetera. Some payments weren't made. Two million became two and a half. Uh, so it is now to a point where this past year or so ago, we now have worked with the dioceses, come out with a ten-year amortization schedule to repay that loan back. So we're not at this point thinking of kind of additional capital campaigns. Um, and, and just as an aside, when we first went down this path, the developers that worked with us said, "Oh, we always do three campaigns, trust me." And we've done two. And basically, we're trying to stay away from ever having to go back to another big capital campaign. So, um, we negotiated with the, with the, uh, with the diocese, and we have a ten-year, uh, amortization of about twenty-nine thousand dollar a month payment. Twenty of it's coming from the school, is there a sort of commitment that they made back for that loan? And the rest is coming out of the parish, either operations or out of our, um, our savings. Okay, so that's kind of where we are in terms of the dioceses and loan, the capital campaigns, and sort of, you know, where we see this going. So that's it for the capital campaign. Next slide. Let's talk about the parish financial condition. And we don't, not like any other, or just like every other, um, religious organization denomination, um, have had a significant change or deterioration in our financial condition since the beginning of COVID. Uh, not alone, uh, either as a parish, as a faith, um, it's across the board. It's starting to come back, but basically, you know, we've got fewer people who are participating, fewer people who are donating. Uh, and as a result, um, you know, we've had factors that have impacted the, uh, the operations. So between COVID and the impact it's had in terms of churching in general, obviously, we had change in pastors, you know, we don't have Father John here who put his arm around somebody and said, "Gee, I need another twenty-three thousand dollars this year," and, you know, somebody write on the check. Um, you know, we don't have, uh, some of those historical benefits or financial, that we can tap into. And then the thousand loan interest, inflation costs, then there's the uncertainty of what's going on with the diocese. So, you know, we've just had a reduction in the amount of participation in the financial, um, condition of the, of the parish. Uh, next slide. Uh, well, I did though, to give you an idea of what, how big are the order of magnitude, I, I just picked out some years. I didn't wanna do COVID because that's kind of a little, little janky in terms of, you know, it went down and up, um, but revenues for twenty nineteen, uh, twenty twenty-two, and then our year later. So it already started to go down beginning in twenty, in twenty nineteen, and went down some further in twenty twenty-two. Uh, we started to have, we, we used to have some small surpluses. They now become some smallish, largish deficits. Um, and this year in particular, um, we've seen a real reduction in, uh, the participation, uh, you know, financially by, by folks. So we've had, uh, down about three thousand dollars year to date in terms of our, uh, revenues. It was about eighty out of the revenues. We've been pretty good in terms of trying to brightside our expenses. I'm pretty cheap, so we're pretty good on that side. Uh, but again, it's a little different. We have a, we have two different businesses. Think of it as, you got the school, which is a pay-for-service school, the model, and here, you know, it's a donation model. So we, uh, we need to figure a way to expand, uh, the, uh, still the scale of the people that we can get to. So going back to the next, so, you know, I don't wanna focus too many, but too much on the numbers. Uh, for Father John, I've always had to use colors, 'cause he didn't like numbers, like green and red a lot. So things are litter bad. But I think the challenge that we have is, is really to expand the participation. Uh, Kristoff says, we still have people that are coming in via livestream, um, being able to go and reach out to folks, uh, to get them back into the, uh, into the church. Um, I think the other thing is how to expand, um, and monetize the use of this facility. And we have a couple of things we're actually working on, thanks to, uh, John and Martha, for, you know, their involvement in the, uh, event coordination activities here. And then I think the other thing is to broaden the financial participation and support of the community. And this isn't just going back to everybody and asking, you know, to dig deeper, but it's broadening to the faith formation community, to the new families that are in the school, to those who have sort of fell off, you know, the, what I call the, the, the sign of, is the Catholics in name only, uh, that we receive maybe once or twice, and try to get them more involved. And Jimmy will talk about some of the things that he's looking to do, try to get, uh, you know, make the community more welcoming, more, uh, vibrant in terms of being able, more inclusive, so they get more folks involved. So, uh, finally, is in efforts to try to expand and broaden this participation, this financial participation. We've actually, um, engaged with an organization called Giving Trin. Uh, you're gonna hear more about that. And this is a sort of a stewardship campaign organization. It's not a fun, it's not a capital campaign. It's, it's basically going out there, you'll probably hear from them as well, but this going out there and going to, uh, there are third party that will go out there and actually do some solicitation in terms of getting some of those people back, getting all these other folks. Okay? So, um, that's all I have. I mean, I'll take questions after Father Jimmy's done, but I just wanted to give you a quick update on those two items, and I'll try to answer the questions you have.
Thank you, Ed. All right, so if you notice, we started with the concretization of the vision, mission of our parish. Uh, you heard about the ministries, what we do, updates, basically, they're, they're our own highlights. And I'd like to present to you, you know, uh, the, this is not actually my mission, this is our vision. After listening in so many ways, I have mentioned it in our mass, and I have mentioned this so many times, you know, informally and formally, I have done so many visiting sessions. First of all, I read your sin and synodality, being the, the chair of the diocese of Oakland, about the sin and synodality on the side. This is the most, uh, uh, number of people in the diocese where participation was really awesome. Eleven thousand people participated. You see how, you know, important the sin was. And now, the Holy Father, together with other bishops, they're talking about it in Rome. Obviously, he would make a decision for the universe of church. But specifically for our diocese, this is, you know, what we have done. And specifically, when I came here, I read that and all, everything, of course, I talked to John. And then, uh, I had a lot of invitations, families inviting me when I first came here, you know, informally, informally, telling me everything, listening to them. And I did two listening sessions in a formal way with, uh, some of the members of the community. And then now, we have this, um, stewardship campaign where you all participated. We got ninety-seven respondents, you know? So to write whatever your comments were, specifically for overall experience of Sunday liturgy and how we can improve in many ways, because Sunday is always the big day for all of us. This is the only time where most of us, we gather as a community. So, uh, after much prayer and reflection, so this is the vision that I wrote, based from my encounter with you, based on what you have sent to me as well. And I put it in one sentence. It is to build a vibrant, welcoming, hospitable, and missionary parish community centered on Jesus Christ. All right? So, and also, this vision is that I wrote, is based also in the bigger picture of the context, you know, of the, where the Catholics are. Do you know that there are thirty-four million active Catholics only in the United States? Out of thirty-four million, there was a survey that was done last year. I presented this to the parish pastoral council and also to the staff. And this is, you know, there are so many things. There are forty-five thousand, we didn't know, you know, uh, research that they did for active Catholics. And these are the top five that they were looking, all right? See, the first one, warm and friendly encounters. In other words, hospitality. Quality servants, traditional worship experiences, holiday programs slash activities celebrating sacraments. And this is exactly what you all also said. We are a small community here in Lafayette. That's a reflection of what is, what Catholics are really looking for. I didn't write, I didn't report here anymore, you know, what are the things that they have liked about Catholics? That can easily be, you know, seen and known. But these are the top five. And so that's why I consider this the overall arching points, and then our, the diocese, and then us specifically, just to show you, you know, in, to, to, that I'm listening to each one of us, I'll do all of you, and that, that this vision is for all of us for the next six years or so. And there are three goals, you know, that I see that are important for us. And, uh, the first one, to grow and promote a culture of fellowship and hospitality in the parish community. You have heard some of the things that the, our ministers, you know, uh, staff have said. And just to add to that, for example, what are we doing right now? One of the things that, uh, recently we have, we have done, that's the reason I asked Kristoff. When I came here last year, family ministry is so important. I'm not married, but you know, your struggles, your joys and everything, right? We have to strengthen family. You don't have the strength of family, gone are the kids. Right? So that's why family ministry focuses here. I told Kristoff and the rest of the staff, the best people to prepare married couples, yes, we preach, we have our spiritual side, canon law and all those things. But to talk to people, that's why I asked him to train people for focus, to prepare married couples. So far, we have, for example, soon next year, because you know, as you have done this, six months to one year. I have couples, you know, for next year. They're preparing now, six to one year. Two young couples, they want to marry in Santa Clara, but they are parishioners. Two couples, they wanna marry to, you know, here, they're young couples as well. At least there are four, but it takes time to prepare them. And they want our family, uh, ministry, you know, uh, ministers, you know, to, to help them in the process of their formation. The best witnesses are you for married life, right? And so grief ministry as well. And then, uh, I talked to, Kristoff mentioned about, um, not only grief ministry, not only family, but, um, he mentioned about reaching out to others. We just started, three months ago, Married Gardens. I come there once a month. We celebrate Mass. There are twelve Catholics. We have never done that, you know, you know, assisted living. You know that some of them, they come here, but it's so hard for them to drive. And so I told them, in my first visit, you know, you have given so much to the church for many years, and how the church comes to you. That's welcoming, that's fellowship, that's hospitality, opening our church to everybody, you know? Let's not be afraid. We're not, you know? Let's open the church to everyone, to, to parents, because how many saints, how many people became saints because the church is open? And that person was just in the corner praying. Ask, read all the stories of the saints. At one time in their life, the church was open for them. They, they was just there in one corner. You know us, right? We're the, the best seats for the Catholics, the last row, right? And so that's why all of this, you know, we, we, we open this to, to everyone. So, and then we have, you know, the event coordinators, hospitality, reaching out to them. And now Mia, just, uh, this morning saying, "Father, can you go to Camp Lindo?" You know, 'cause there are groups of Catholics in there, and they want to hear from us. Just spend twenty-five minutes once a month, and we're gonna do that together with you. 'Cause our young people are in need of our presence, and they are the future of our church. Not only the future, but they're part of the church right now. So that's why, that's part of what I call to grow and promote a culture of fellowship and hospitality in the parish community, that everybody is welcoming, you know? In, in many ways, in different ways. The second one is to strengthen and deepen spiritual prayer and sacramental life of the parish. This is a church. That's why it's so important to celebrate sacraments, to de, uh, to deeply participate in the spiritual and, and prayer life of the community. And we, we're doing this for many years, and so we continue to do that. Because if we are, you know, we'll just focus on services, things like that, those are great, they're excellent, they're important. But everything that we do, I think, should come from our prayerful reflection. It's like reflection and action, action and reflection, they come together. It's not just one. Otherwise, we're just like, you know, any agencies that the government can do. We are a church, so that's why it's so important for us, you know, to celebrate the sacraments, to have retreats, to have talks, and all these things, you know, that, that, that we need as a parish. And the last one is, um, to leave out the call of missionary discipleship through compassion and service of others. We cannot, we have to go out. We have to go out to the world and touch their lives. Otherwise, again, we're just inside of us. It's so important that we bring at least one person or two people, you know, in our church. It's so important. That's why I tried to, you know, do dialogue with our Jewish brothers and sisters. I mentioned that with you, you know, going, you know, to them, not only the Jewish, but other, uh, communities. We have parents here, there are pastors in other churches, but they send their kids here in our Catholic schools. It's so important to, to, to be with them, you know, to, to walk with them. But for us, as Catholics, it is, it's our primordial duty, I think, for us to reach out to others in different ways, outreach, social justice, liturgy, all these things are important. And with the goal of one, making disciples. We cannot be content just us. We have to bring the gospel of Jesus to everyone, to everybody. Rich, poor, young, or old, everybody deserves to hear the gospel. And who are the best witnesses? You, us, you know, our action, our words, our presence, they're all important. So these are the three major goals for the next few years. And I hope I summarized all those things that you said. This is not just Father Jimmy, this is us, all right? This is us. But as I had mentioned there, give me time, all right? I'm listening to you. I'm willing to work with you to the best of my ability, together with the councils. That's why after forty years, we have a parish pastoral council. That's the first thing right away that I, I, I think I need, you know? Done are those days. Father knows everything. No, Father does not know everything, all right? That's why we are in this church right now, because we relied so much on the clergy. No, we are all baptized people. It's just so happened I am, I have a different role. You have a different role. You are partners in the ministry. As the Holy Father says, all of us, we are called to preach the gospel of love, of mercy, of hospitality. So that's where my position is. And I know it's not easy, because we cannot, you know, what is that saying? We cannot become what we want, what we want by remaining what we are. We have to grow, to change, to move forward. Juniper, uh, juniper, serra, sets adelante, forward-looking, all right? But, you know, knowing the tradition of the past, but forward-looking. Don't look back, move forward. So that's it. Those are my thoughts for you, and I'd like to open out, you know, our, you know, next twenty minutes for Q and A. Let's keep going, let's keep going, let's keep going. Yeah, Kristoff, and of course, Kim, and, uh, and Ian. And if you have questions, anything that you want to ask, you have the microphone, and you're willing to, to answer them, and if there are questions that are really long to answer, or stay willing to stay here and, you know, to listen to all of you, okay? Anything about, anything?
Where is the adult catechism covered? Which ministry?
That's, uh, Kristoff?
Question, question, adult confirmation. And, um, and sometimes we have brought in speakers, but there's a costume off, bringing outside speakers in. Um, so there's a women's group, women, that's a women's ministry, that's for adults, that's, you can consider them adult, the categories of, you know, and the men's group that they just started is for men. So that's what we currently have.
Okay. Our adult formation, primarily our CIA and the different, uh, you know, groups, like women's ministry, for example, Bible study in one, Sister Laurel gives that. And there is also the men's group, they wanted to, to do that as well. Okay?
Father Jimmy, I, I want to commend you on what you're doing, because what's important to us, we were St. Monica's parishioners, as were several people that I recognize in the room. And when you put faith in the laity to run a lot of these programs with their gifts and their talents, it tells us, you know, that you value us and that we're really part of the church and part, you know, we're not just coming to have you do everything. And that's where a lot of us fell out of St. Monica's, when we had a pastor that did not have faith in the laity to run these programs. in the laity to run these programs and just be there as a support for them. Everybody did not feel valued. And I think you're doing a really great job, and I thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you for that, for your kind comments. And, uh, you know, of course, we have general guidelines, and I, of course, it's still not perfect. I try to be creative based on the guidelines of the dioceses and all those things. But no, that I'm listening to. One of the things that we're gonna do in, in, in the near future, I already said in their liturgy committee meeting, I want to have something based now from your scene, and also what you're saying to me, you know, formally, informally said, and also in this last survey. In the future, maybe Advent time, we will have what we call a part, once a week, one of the masses, so we rotate, uh, what we call a reflection, finding God in all things. It's not original to Father Jimmy, that's part of the, the gesture. It's, hey, all, okay? Finding God in all things, signations, right? So, I was thinking, because you're telling me, Father, can we have other people to share? Obviously, other than the deacons, but we're all men. And as you know, our church ordained ministers are the ones who can preach in the holy time. Now, we have, uh, you know, rise and shine because we have children, yeah, that's fine. But you see, I have the start, and I have something in the middle, and you have to close, because really the guidelines is, you know, they are only ordained ministers. But anyway, be that as it may, in the future, maybe Advent time, I will create a team where this team maybe, you know, they will reflect on anything about gospel, about maybe the Gospel, and then, or first readings, second reading resources, or their life story, basically. So I would call it finding God in all things. Men and women, after communion, they will share a three-week reflection. You get it? Because you're all baptized, we're all baptized. God is within us and amongst us. And so, that will be one of the things that I will do in order to respond to your call. Also to listen to other people other than the priests, alright? And so, that will happen, and that's again, another way of empowering women and men to be there to pulpit and say it, but still, we follow the guidelines of the church. And I don't think there's, you know, anything that we are not following in there. And that's after communion. Basically, one word, testimony. I've been doing that to Andrew's group, Confirmation Kids, they do that. Why can you not do it in our, you know? To make it, you know, you know, more likely, you know, and everything, really connected and everything. Father said something, but this, uh, you know, single woman, or this single man, or this married man or woman, want to say something, or a youth, for one time, right? To share the Word of God to us. Finding God in all things. Alright, thanks.
I know that, um, one of the things a lot of us, including you on church, is pointing about just the general attendance at Mass on Sunday. For a lot of reasons, which we're all very familiar with. Uh, but I've heard from more than one parent in school that when you, um, and I, I think, I think you started this with the weekly Mass, bringing the kids over from school, Wednesday or Thursday.
Yeah, Wednesday, right.
And some of the, I think some of the parents also come with the kids. And then, the, the, the view that I've heard is, okay, we've now fulfilled our weekly obligation to attend Mass, and we don't be there for it to come on Sunday. Now, that's not all of them, of course, but, but I've heard that. So I'm wondering, as a question, whether you deluded to, to a certain extent, the attendance at Mass on Sunday by offering, you know, another opportunity during the week that's superseding what otherwise had been, you know? They were delighted that they would have otherwise attended on Sunday.
That's true, and actually, but...
So I just, I didn't, I'm not suggesting stop it, I just, as a question, I'm wondering if that's what's happening.
That is true, not only in our parish, but in other parishes. And so, I've talked to Ms. Goshay before the start of the school year. So we just launched, uh, three weeks ago, the pack, the pews. What's my strategy? And you know, these are all busy people, grandparents, parents. If I go to the kids, and your child tells you, "Mom, Dad, I'm so excited to go to church on Sunday, will you come with me?" And so, pack the pews, get in. So, once a month, the school parents, because we want to reach out to all parents, they come and participate in a Mass at 11:30, they're hosting it. So it's like a parish and, and, and school community together. Because you know, obviously, I'm strengthening, I'm emphasizing to them, your Wednesday Mass is not the Mass. But that's, there are so many factors. However, what I need now is to have these packed pews where all the children from the school are involved, the choir, readers, everything, just like the youth Mass. So, they come here. So it's good for me, at least, starting, you know, little by little, by bringing them once a month, let's say, four classes, like last time, at 11:30. That's the first night I have seen it, 250 people, right? 50 from the regulars, and plus, you know, the children, and plus their parents. Because I know you parents are busy. I don't like to say, you know, although it's a joke for us Catholics, right? But if the parents who just come and they tell them, "You're CEO, all the morning, everyone come," right? They're Christian Easter morning. So I just tell them, "You come, God means us where we are." Alright? And so, hopefully, it will grow. And so far, it's great. In fact, we're gonna have the second pack of pews next week. So for now, that is the approach, other than my presence at the school, you know, here and there, and, um, you know, helping them. The other day, three days ago, I trained 35 kids for altar serving. They want to be altar servers, yeah! And even, you know, first grader, you know? And even non-Catholics. And I don't know how to answer them, but then be lovely, tell them, you know, what they can be the future. And Angie, thank you for Nick and Joseph, special, you know? Angie Cosse, you know, you know, her kids are really, you know, great altar servers. So thank you. So that's what we're doing so far, and we'll see how it goes. You know, but the, the main purpose, leading the parents other than the kids.
Um, I just wanted to comment on a question from my subjective experience. So I'm a parent of the school, and I'm also a parishioner. Granted, I don't come to every single, um, you know, three masses, and I haven't gone to, uh, all the 9:30 masses. But from my observations, I would say that more parents, I see more parents from the schools coming on Sundays, of course, with pack of pews, and even during non-pack of pew masses. So I think, uh, from my observations, it hasn't been diluted. And that some of the parents that are going at 9:30 are not people I normally see during Sunday masses. Um, so I think the pack of pews has helped. And as a parent, um, it's really nice to know that my kids are coming every Wednesday, because I think, uh, in the years past, there wasn't a strong church presence going to Mass in school on a regular basis. So as a parent, I'm glad that my kids are going every Wednesday.
Thank you, yeah. And you know, uh, I tried to be present in all the parent board meeting. They're very supportive, C Y O and everything, um, it's just that, you know, really connecting with our parents, and they represent you, and they're on board with everything that we're doing so far. And that includes, of course, you know, as Ed said, you know, paying our community center, by the way, aside, even you're not asking it. We are the only parish that was able to get a 10-year loan program from the dioceses. There is no other parish. And it's great that both communities are helping, you know, to make this, you know, honor the commitment, and, you know? So it's great in, in, in many ways. And thank you for the parents, of course, for always supporting us, because without you, we can do, we cannot do anything in here. Paul?
Yeah, I would just like to, this is more of like an observation. It's, um, I just commend you, Father Jimmy, and all of the parish leaders in hosting this session, these sessions, and, and, um, reaching out with the parish stewardship and having the, the survey that people could fill out. Um, I just think the, the whole spirit of synodality, of course, that's such a big word and such an abstract word, but really, it's really about, uh, becoming a listening church. That's really what it's about. And it's not necessarily a product that, you know, there's, there's a starting point, and then there's an end point, and then there's a product, and then we, we know what the outcome is. It's really more of a process. It's really more of an ongoing, uh, process and transformation of the church in becoming more listening, listening to each other, listening to the world, and listening to the Holy Spirit. So I, I think that's very much what we're about today. And, um, and I just hope that this can be, uh, an ongoing thing where we, we continue to develop as a community in listening, listening to each other.
Thank you, Paul. Ernest?
Yeah, I just have a basic question. How many, to our best, best of your understanding, how many Catholics are in our parish? And how many people are supporting the parish?
How many people are coming to church? Is that the...
I'll ask you a question too. Uh, I, I'm trying to figure out, of all the Catholics in the parish, and we know we have...
In the parish, okay. I mean, Ed, can you help me with this?
And then, and then what number of those actually support?
There's about a thousand, uh, rule of thumb, and actually, we're pretty much average if I look across, you know, the numbers I've seen. Alright, I hate this, but, uh, I think there's, at one time, it was somewhere around 1,000 or 1,100 families, okay? And there's probably between 350 and 400 who are regular supporters, which is... 35% is the rule of thumb for most of the Catholic community in the U S. And I believe in terms of then, when we look at 12 people who have donated in some fashion, even the ones who come like, you know, Christmas and Easter and whatever, I think we're up in the 600-plus range. So that's the order of magnitude now. Is that 600 out of 1,000, or is 100 of them just visitors? Or is that, I don't know?
So let me, so as a rough number, you would take 600 and divide it into the total receipts of the parish, and you would get kind of an average of what people, as a rough number.
Yeah, as a rough number, I would, uh, probably, I probably wouldn't do that, because I'd look at those numbers that I showed, that two categories of revenue, one is called plate, that's like passing the hat, that they're the baskets, or E F T, or people who donate like out of their 401Ks or R M Bs at the end of the year. All that fits into that category. The other are things where we charge for programs, like the faith formation program, uh, confirmation. We, we, there's a charge for, and there's other, other things as well. But I would take that, that one number, the, the plate number, and I would divide it, um, by... I would might do it, but it's close enough, okay? Yeah. That's the order of magnitude.
Right.
Yes. Out of, out of that number, I mean, how do you try to find out why these people are not coming to your church?
Uh, that's one of the things that they're doing with this whole survey and the stewardship thing, is there's gonna be, uh, you know, you know, a third party that's gonna be contacting people that, you know, either through email, or direct mail, or phone calls, or whatever, uh, that people who've just fallen off, you know, that may have moved, that may have died, that may have just, you know, gone somewhere else. So part of what we're gonna come out of all this is we're gonna get a better understanding of what that 1,100 or 1,000 families...
Yeah, that would be good to know.
Yeah, and, and because, and the other thing is, is, you know, how many are, that we don't even know are out there that are back in the area. So that's the other thing, is the group that we're working with is, has been pretty successful with working with parishes and dioceses around the country in terms of being able to, to, to get more people back involved, not only just raise, you know, revenue from the existing ones, it's expanding the...
And it would be, uh, it would be nice to know why, you know?
Well, yeah, I mean, that's, that's part of what they're doing, but, but, uh, you know, I guess we could guess on average why, but, you know? Uh, but to get a better understanding of, of, you know, if there's things that can be done proactively to get them back involved, versus ones that just say, you know, no for no sake, you know?
Yeah, and some of the things were actually, you know, said also during the presentation, just to reiterate that really the COVID hit everybody, as you know. For example, there are people still watching, right? And you know that the dispensation over, you know, watching Mass, it's already over, right? But again, each one, because of psyllos and their own sickness, you don't know? But in the end, you know, God is a God of mercies, up to God, you know, how people deal with that one, right? So they don't come. And another thing, you know, uh, the dioceses and challenges we have, the bankruptcy. And another one, obviously, they said they'd already changed a pastor, "I'm a new person." Father Jimmy has been here for 25 years. You know, we have to admit that, you know? Those are some factors.
There's a lot of...
Yeah, there's a lot of changes. And I, I've said this when I came, like, uh, last year, my first month, and I said this, "You are all mourning." Yeah. You lost somebody who was great, who's awesome, and you have a new person. Mourning doesn't mean somebody died physically. You know, this by your own experience, right? You live one place, you go to another place, a new friend of yours. I am so aware of that, you know? Because where I came, where I came before, I, I was before, there were also mourning, right? But the most important thing is we go forward, right? But you have to give space for that one, yeah. So that's why all these things, and, and I understand that, you know? Some will leave, you know, the majority will stay. That's okay. That's why, yeah, what I said to some people who said that is, "You know what? It's okay, you wanna move, you know, after reaching out with all the efforts, as long as you go to a Catholic church." Okay? That's very universal church, right? Of course, you want people to stay. But sometimes, they, they make choices. And let me tell you, I'm okay with that. But I will try all my best, together with the team, to win, to stay, and come on, give us a chance, right? And so, and see. And I say this to funerals, when people come, you know, in funerals, you've attended this, right? And many funerals, many of them, they're not Catholics. And one of the things, if I don't forget, I say is this, "Have a second look of the church." And that's what I want to tell all of you to do. Have a second look, you know? I've been here only for a year or 14 months. Have a second look, see and how it unfolds. The Holy Spirit is with all of us, so I think we'll be okay in the end. Okay? So those are some of the reasons, and there are other specific reasons also within the parish that perhaps, you know, people, you know, they have their own opinions and things, and we just have to respect that. The most important thing is, uh, I, I talked to one person, like, you know, we agree to disagree, but with respect, with love, I listen to the person, that person listens to me, I think that's okay, right? And so, that's part of our journey, walking together, synodality, because there's no problem. It's a continued serpents of prayer. Yes, worship, thank you.
In line with the welcoming, um, aspect, I would love to see us use inclusive language. It's really hard for me to pray for us men under isolation. It doesn't work for me very well.
Yeah. You know, that's, uh, that's another thing that I'm trying to, you know?
Navigate?
Yeah, navigate, yeah. You know, it's that, but we know, and we use the word "can", as we know that, it is for everybody. It's, you know, it's a translation, you know? Yeah, I understand that. Yeah. I'm torn between, you know, that, you know, guidelines that we have and also the kind of understanding. But we're used to the best. That's my answer to the best of what we can do. But I think for the regular worshipping community, a regular worship, we should follow, you know, the guidelines. But even if you see in other ways, let's say that prayer, intercessory prayers we try to be, because we can do that, we have mourning way, but there are some things that so hard to, you know, because of the church. But thank you for saying that, for expressing it, you know, and, yeah. Okay? And I myself, I try to persons, or, you know, when I'm reading, you know, what the church says about, okay? So I try to change some of them, if it is possible. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. You didn't answer, you didn't ask this, but before I give the closing thoughts about the bankruptcy, you know? I mentioned to you, because this was a question, I think, important for you to know what was my response or the team's response. Last, the first one down home, one of the questions is, where are we in the bankruptcy? As far as the bankruptcy, you know, four months ago, this reality of bankruptcy with the diocese is very fluid. Whatever I said at that time, you know, it keeps on changing, you know why? Because we are at the mercy of the federal court. If it is Bishop Barber, everything stays, especially the mission of the church. It has to be that way. And I want to reiterate this. It is the duty and a more responsibility, first of all, of the church to address the victims. And I want to say this again, we have stolen their faith and we have to reach out to them. This is not about money alone, it's about people who are victims, okay? And so, that's why the diocese, through Bishop Barber, he tries everything possible to address in a monetary way because this is where, you know, to file the bankruptcy because Church of Oakland honestly, we don't have money. And last night, for example, you see the fluidity, we said 360. Right now, I think we have 400. And all of this, as a total, 400, they all happened 60s, 70s, and 80s. And so, in that context, the diocese, we pay from the properties that we have. That's the first thing. Then, what would be the second thing? In the future, as you move along, you can see the writings of the wall. Because you know, one case, for example, how much does it cost? The lawyers, of course, obviously, of the victims. It will take at least a minimum of $500,000 to a million per person, per case. The diocese does not have $400,000 for that matter, yeah? And so, in the end, each parish, because we belong in one diocese, the lawsuit is addressed to the Roman Catholic Bishop of Oakland, RCTO, and we're a part of that. The schools are separated, cemeteries are separated. And if the court decides, "We need your money", because let's say, you know, this victim, he needs or she needs the money now, you know, you're all, many of your business. We're gonna set a property to take some money, right? "I need the money right now, you know, for medication, for something, whatever." And so, where will the diocese get the money? We will be asked, each parish. Well, there's no formula yet, but I can see the writings on the wall. That's where we're going. So you see the fluidity. But of course, we will make sure that everything that you give, especially for the stewardship, as Ed said, is really restricted for those, for operations. That's why we don't have capital campaign because those things can be taken from us. But for as small as we, you know, do this, only restricted for operations, I hope and pray that they will not be touched. But in some ways, my point is, we will be asked to contribute. Whatever is the amount, whatever is the formula, I don't know. So, even if you didn't ask that question, I want to say that because it was an important question in the first group. Anything along that line? Okay. Let me just close by saying this. My dear friends, thank you for coming, you know? Thank you for your time, for your love, and just being present here, show your care for our parish. And just want to say, you know, this is our home, where we honor God. We're all here because we care about our parish and want to see it continue to grow and be a vibrant community where people will want to come to worship God. Keep an open mind and heart as we navigate these changes and ask yourself, "How are you willing to make this happen? What skill do you have that will contribute to Saint Peace, being the best parish in the area? Come at the end of this meeting and commit to making things better by offering your talent. Because when you do, you'll be proud of what we can all accomplish together. I'm guessing you have all seen The Wizard of Oz, right? Dorothy was always looking for her home and went through triumph and error all along the yellow brick road until she realized what she wanted was right in front of her. We all want a wonderful place to worship. If we look around, we can cut out all the distractions and focus on what we each have inside us already. Our home is at Saint Peace. We're spinning to you, we already have all we need. Thank you and have a Sunday. Blessings.